We shall remain standing and receive the second gentleman of the land, the vice president of the Republic of Ghana, His Excellency Al-Hajj Dr Mahmoud Baumia, as he exchanges blessings with Nananum, distinguished invited guests. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Kete, continue to provide the beautiful traditional music that you are providing. Thank you very much. We acknowledge the arrival of His Excellency, the Vice President of the Republic, Al-Hajj Dr Mahmoud Baumia. Your Excellencies, Nananum, Ministers of State and Senior Government officials, Honorable members of parliament, Honorable members of the citizens, The Vice President of the Republic and the King of Usikagat, Kete Wete, has arrived. Thank you very much, Policeman. May I also inform that this programme is live on the national broadcaster, the Ghana Television, our affiliate media houses all over the area. We thank you for your partnership. We are showing live. These are the districts, the 43 MMDCEs in the Ashanti region. The hard-working Regional Minister is coordinating the President's efforts in the region. This is the zip line. We see our colleagues, recipients of the allowances that were taken from them. We have restored the allowances. We have restored the allowances for teacher trainees and nursing trainees. We are delivering emergency medicine by drone, the first of its kind, the first of its kind, that size, the first of its kind, not only in Africa but indeed the world. His Excellency, the President, cast sword for the construction, I believe, of a road, a major road in the Ashanti region. The school. Asukwa, you are right. Evidence-based. This was how it was before, this is how it is now. Change is happening. Change is happening. Completed classroom block at Manso Nkwanta. The chief's compound is under construction. District of Insurance Offices have been commissioned. These pictures were taken, we have taken these pictures from the file. All these projects are now completed, are in use. Health Theatre and Maternity Block, Tchadumasi Poli Clinic. The roads. The roads. The roads. Kumasi Road, Etimetim. We are desilting the drains, Petransa from Sianquerry Junction to Petransa Bronkrom boundary. This road is now completed. This road is now completed. Kumewu ran about with associated drains and caves on adjoining roads. Pre-shaping of Oyoko Banko etcetera, Akrofumso Fida Roads. Akrofumso, thank you very much. Evidence-based. Evidence-based. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I give you my word. These videos are out there, they are on screens. They are on screens and we shall take time to go through the entire presentation before we leave here. We shall also send this to our mobile phones via WhatsApp so that everybody can see that work is happening on the ground. At this juncture, this is just a teaser. At this juncture, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, the moment is here. We promised, we have delivered. We promised. We promised. We promised. Let me feel the energy. We promised. We promised. Change is happening. Thank you very much. May I, may I, at this juncture, Nana Chair, the rare privilege and honour to invite onto the podium the second gentleman of the land, the Vice President of the Republic of Ghana, His Excellency Dr Mahmoud Baumia. Please let us receive Dr with a big round of applause. A big round of applause for His Excellency, the Vice President. A big round of applause for His Excellency, the Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anaban Tamahini, Representative of Otunfoosito II, Regional Minister, Ministers of State, Members of Parliament, MMDCE, Our Father, Dr Adur Kufuo, Chairman of SNIT, Board Chairman, CEOs and Deputy CEOs, Vice Chancellor of the KNUST and the Pro-Vice Chancellor, Heads of Departments, Deans, Staff and Students, Pledgees and Imams, Our General Secretary, Indefatigable John Boyd, the MPP and National Youth Organisation, Nabo Achi, Friends from the Media, Distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I bring you greetings from His Excellency, the President, Nana Adudankwa Akufuado. It is a pleasure to have the opportunity to share with you our assessment of the economy and our assessment of the implementation of our manifesto promises based on the data. Also, I would like to take this opportunity to shed some light on a number of issues that are no doubt of concern as far as the economy is concerned. So, basically, we are going to let the data speak for itself. So let's start at the beginning. The MPP, under the leadership of Nana Adudankwa Akufuado, was largely aware of the nature of the problems that existed in the economy before we came into office. We had analysed the economy before we came. We analysed these problems, talked about them and put forward solutions which were largely captured in our 2016 election manifesto. Some of the problems that existed in the economy, many of which were worsened following the eight years of the NDC government, included declining economic growth, high inflation, high interest rates, high rate of exchange rate depreciation, high fiscal deficit, rapid accumulation of the debt. In fact, the debt increased 12-fold, 12-fold, under their government in eight years. Weak and collapsing financial system, high unemployment, NHRS was back to cash and carry, emergency healthcare system was collapsing with only 55 semi-functional ambulances in the country. We had to contend with four years of doom-saw. Average annual increase in electricity prices between 2010 and 2015 was 45% every year. Increase averagely in electricity prices. We had increases in taxes on many items where there's a freeze in the recruitment in the public sector, cuts in research allowances for lecturers, abolition of teacher training allowances, abolition of nursing training allowances and teachers were paid just three months' arrears for working for two to three years. There were high import duties. High import duties and we had corrupt practices associated with the acquisition of passports, driver's licences, registering businesses and so on. Problems renewing NHRS membership, cumbersome process of clearing goods at the port. Parents could not afford senior high school fees for their kids. We had no national ID card. We had no working address system for the country. We had corrupt processes associated with the manual court processes and the IMF programme was resorted to to restore public policy credibility with its attendant conditionalities. This was the situation. Notwithstanding the difficult economy we inherited and all these problems, we had to get on with it and start to fix the problem. We were cognisant of our many promises. In fact, at the direction of the President, Nana Adudankwa Akufuado, we put together a dashboard of manifesto promises. Immediately, we were declared winners of the 2016 election and before we were sworn into office, he asked us to put together this dashboard of manifesto promises, before we were sworn into office. And we have been using this dashboard to track our manifesto promises since. Ladies and gentlemen, the challenge was huge. How can an economy that could not afford to pay teacher and nursing training allowances suddenly deliver lower taxes, restore teacher and nursing training allowances, create jobs, implement free senior high school education, create napco, planting for food and jobs, one village, one dam, one constituency, one ambulance, reduce electricity prices, formalise the economy, industrialise the economy, reduce the cost of doing business and so on, while at the same time reducing the budget deficit and reducing the rate of borrowing? It seemed an impossible task and our opponents were emphatic that we could not fulfil our promises. But we were confident that with good economic management and by the grace of God, we could make what seemed impossible possible. It required a resetting of the fiscal and monetary policy framework in the context of the existing IMF programme that we had inherited. IMF programme had been completely run off-track by our predecessors. We renegotiated the IMF programme in a manner that provided fiscal consolidation at the same time creating the fiscal space to deliver on our promises to Ghanaians. It took some skill and experience on the part of the Ghana team to renegotiate the IMF programme that ensures consolidation but at the same time strong growth. And which, I am happy to say, Ghana successfully exited the IMF programme in April last year. After three years in office, the results of the fiscal consolidation are evident and the data shows that significant progress has been made to restore macroeconomic stability and economic growth. The growing confidence in the macroeconomy owes a lot to the prudent management of our public finances and monetary affairs over the last three years. To underpin fiscal discipline going forward, Ghana has for the first time in history passed into law a Fiscal Responsibility Act that limits the fiscal deficit in any year to a maximum of 5% of GDP and requires a positive primary balance to ensure debt sustainability. In addition to a Fiscal Responsibility Act, be established a Fiscal Council to provide oversight and advice on the implementation of fiscal policy. This has never been done in our history. So as a result of good fiscal discipline, the fiscal deficit on a cash basis has declined from 6.8% of re-based GDP in 2016 to 3.8% in 2018, 4.8% in 2019, below the fiscal rule of 5%. This, for the first time in a decade, so we are managing the public finances better. For the first time in a decade, ladies and gentlemen, Ghana recorded primary balance surplus. Primary balance surplus means that our tax revenue exceeded government spending excluding debt service payments. For three years in a row. This is for the first time in a whole decade of 10 years. For three years in a row, we have achieved primary budget surpluses. For three years in a row. The primary balance surplus was 0.5% of GDP in 2017, 1.4% in 2018 and 0.9% in 2019. This compares with a deficit of 1.1% in 2016. A positive primary balance is important because when you have a positive primary balance, it means that you are slowing down a rate of debt accumulation. That is what it means. A positive primary balance means you are slowing down the rate of debt accumulation and that means you are really implementing good fiscal management and prudent fiscal management. So let us look at what has happened to the debt, right? As a result of this fiscal discipline that we have imposed upon ourselves and achieving the positive primary balance. The total public debt has increased from 122 billion Ghana cedis in 2016 to 214 billion Ghana cedis. That is 62.2% of GDP at the end of November 2019. But this includes the cost of the banking sector clean-up, which as you know is over 13 billion Ghana cedis and counting. Excluding the cost of the banking sector clean-up, the debt stock stands at 203 billion or 59.1% of GDP. However, if you look at these debt dynamics, the strong fiscal adjustment that has taken place and better debt management has meant that the rate of debt accumulation has slowed down considerably to the lowest in a decade. Between 2008 and 2012, right? The first, 2008 and 2012, Ghana's debt stock increased by 267% between 2008 and 2012. Ghana's debt stock increased by 267% between 2012 and 2016. Ghana's debt stock increased by another 243%. But between 2016 and 2019, the increase has been by 79%. So there's a big difference. So you look at the graph here, you will see that if you look at the debt-to-GDP ratio, for example, the debt-to-GDP ratio increased by 49% between 2008 to 2012, increased by 19% between 2012 and 2016 and by 3.9% between 2016 and 2019. So you are seeing that there is fiscal discipline that is being implemented. There's a big difference between before 2017 and after 2017. It's a clear difference. So, ladies and gentlemen, the government of Nana Adudankwa Akufuado has therefore kept his promise to reduce the rate of borrowing that was taking place before we came into office. I would also like to note that although in absolute terms the interest payments on the debt have increased over the last two years, with much better debt management, interest as a percentage of our GDP, the GDP is our income, has actually declined from 6.9% of GDP to 5.6% in 2016 to 5.6% in 2018 and 5.7% in 2019. So we are reducing the burden of the debt on the budget by reducing debt as a ratio of the interest payments as a ratio of GDP from 6.9% to 5.7%. That is a major achievement that has taken place. So even though, even though the quantum of the debt has gone up, we are paying less as a percentage of our annual income to service that debt and that is good economic management. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to turn to inflation and interest rates. A combination of prudent monetary policy and fiscal consolidation supported by zero central bank financing of the government and strong external sector developments have underpinned a steady disinflation process over the last 36 months. Inflation has dropped steadily from a high of 15.4% at the end of 2016 to 7.9% at the end of December 2019, which is about the lowest since 1992. The lowest since 1992. Ladies and gentlemen, these two graphs are very instructive. If you look at these two graphs, the one on the left will tell you about different types of inflation. You have the headline inflation, you have the food inflation and then the non-food inflation. The food inflation is the lower one in the orange. But what you are seeing is that before the MPP government came into office, there was a wide divergence between the different inflation rates, headline, food inflation and non-food inflation. There was a wide divergence. It means inflationary expectations were not quite well anchored. What you are seeing, since we've come into office with the good work and management that we are doing, you are seeing a convergence of food inflation, non-food inflation and headline inflation, which means we are managing the inflation much better and that is a good thing for Ghana. Now, how has this decline in inflation, I mean if you look at what we call core inflation, which is underlying inflation or inflation excluding the volatile items like energy and food prices, that is the graph on the right, core inflation, underlying inflation. If you take out the volatile items in the basket, how does it look like? You will see that under the NDC, core inflation kept going up just like you've seen with headline inflation. It's like they were taking us up a mountain, giving all of us wahala going up the mountain, right? So you see core inflation going up. Under the MPP, you see core inflation. You are now coming down the mountain and easing the burden of the people. And how has this reflected in the everyday lives of people? I've taken two items. One is petroleum prices or the rate of increase in petroleum prices. If you look at the rate of increase in petroleum prices, it has declined. In fact, if you look at NDC, between 2009 and 2012, the average annual increase in petrol prices was 29.5% every year. Between 2012 and 2013 and 2016, every year the average increase was 24%. But because we've been able to bring inflation down and manage the economy better under Nana Akufuado, between 2017 and 2019, it has been 13.5%. So this is reflecting, this good economic management is reflecting. But further, in addition to this, you've seen a decrease in electricity prices. We promised to reduce electricity prices. People thought it wasn't possible. I will take you back because sometimes people tell us we have short memories and we always have to remind ourselves that we will not forget. We will not forget their record. If you look at the record, the data is clear from the table you see. Between 2010 and 2015, in 2010, electricity prices went up in this country by 89%. 2011, 10%. 2012, of course, election year, no electricity price increase. 2013, they gave it to us, 78%. 2014, 23.5.36, 28.36%. 2015, 59.2%. This is electricity price increase. We promised that we will do a decrease in electricity price increase, okay? 2016, of course, there was no increase. 2016, of course, there was no increase another election. But 2017, our first year in government, there was no increase in electricity price. 2018, we reduced electricity prices by 22%. And by the way, this is the first government in the history of the Fourth Republic, first government that has reduced electricity prices, first government. And 2019, we increased the prices by 11%. But when you take the net between 2019 and 2018, in net terms, since we've been in office, we've reduced electricity prices by 10% in net terms. And it has not happened so far in a government in the Fourth Republic. And therefore, it is a promise that we have fulfilled. Reducing inflation, ladies and gentlemen, but from by 50% between 2016 and 2019 is really a remarkable achievement. A major, major achievement that we've done to reduce inflation. In fact, the sterling performance of the Bank of Ghana and the leadership of Governor Addison in bringing down inflation is among the reasons why the Bank of Ghana was just last week selected amongst all the central banks in the world, the world. The Bank of Ghana last week was selected as Central Bank of the Year 2019. Central Bank of the Year 2019. It has never happened. It has never happened that our central bank has even featured there in the top three. In the historically, it has never happened. Normally, we have won African Central Bank of the Year. We have won that before. But to win the world or the global Central Bank of the Year, it tells you that something good is happening in Ghana under Nana Adodanqua Akufuado. And the steady disinflation process has provided scope for a significant monetary policy easing. The Bank of Ghana's monetary policy rate has been cut from 25.5% in 2017 to 16%. Total of 950 basis points or 9.5%. So if you see on the left, the Bank of Ghana policy rate is on the left. You see that under the NDC, you see a steady increase in the interest rate. Again, they are taking us up the mountain and we are having more wahala as they are taking us up. But with the MPP in office, you've seen that we have turned that around and we are coming down the mountain under Nana Adodanqua Akufuado. And you have seen that this has resulted in a decrease in lending rates, even though we still want to see lending rates come down. We've come down from 32% in 2016 to 23.6% in 2019. That's a major reduction, but we will keep working to do more. Ladies and gentlemen, I now turn to our performance in the external sector. Ghana's external payments position has strengthened. For the first time in 20 years, for the first time in 20 years, the trade balance, that is the difference between what we export and what we import, that is the trade balance, the difference between our exports and our imports. For the first time in 20 years, the trade balance has recorded a surplus for three years in a row. We recorded a surplus in 2017, a larger surplus in 2018, and an even larger surplus in 2019. And this is not because we are importing less, but it is largely because of increased exports as a result of the positive transformation of this economy under the MPP government. The positive trade balance has resulted in a significant narrowing of the current account deficit as a percentage of GDP. So you see the graph on the right which shows the current account, and you see that the deficit was large, it has gotten smaller and smaller and smaller under the NDP. Improvements in the current account performance and increased capital flows have helped to boost international reserves over the last 24 months. Gross international reserves have reached 7.05 billion in December 2018, 3.6 months of import cover, increased to 8.4 billion, four months of import cover at the end of 2019. Ghana's net international reserves have also increased from 3.4 billion in 2016 to 5.1 billion in 2019. So our reserves are growing and are healthy. I now want to turn to an interesting topic on the minds of many Ghanaians, which is the exchange rate of the CD and its developers. Ladies and gentlemen, the exchange rate, and I want you to pay attention on this section because there's so much propaganda around it. So the exchange rate is simply the price of one currency relative to other currencies. So the CD to the dollar. At the basic level, it is influenced by factors such as the relative demand and supply for foreign currency. It is a price, just like the price of any good or service. How much of one currency does one need to give up to get a unit of another currency? And generally, it reflects the purchasing power of one currency relative to another. Countries have a choice between two basic types of exchange rate regimes. You can have a fixed exchange rate regime, which is one which is administratively fixed by the government or the monetary authority with fiscal and monetary policy deployed to maintain the fixed exchange rate regime. So the CFA countries, for example, operate a fixed exchange rate regime. In practice, countries will devalue or revalue their currencies in line with their fundamentals. The other type of exchange rate regime is the floating exchange rate regime, where the exchange rate is determined by the forces of demand and supply. Ghana operates a floating regime or a managed floating regime. And for that reason, in Ghana, we can or should never expect that the exchange rate will be fixed. We are not operating a fixed exchange rate regime in Ghana. It will fluctuate depending on the demand and supply. What policymakers can do is to try to control the rate of depreciation or appreciation of the currency through sound policies. In the context of a floating exchange rate regime, therefore, arresting the depreciation of a currency can only mean slowing down the rate of depreciation or stopping the rapid and volatile depreciation of the currency. That is what you arresting depreciation means in the context of a floating exchange rate regime. In general, there is a direct relationship between higher inflation, especially non-food inflation, and the exchange rate appreciation or depreciation. And if you look at the table uh that is here, it tells you fundamentally what determines an exchange rate in an economy is largely driven by inflation differentials. Those are fundamentals. Other factors can happen in the short run to affect the currency. But whenever you have higher inflation relative to the currency you are dealing with, you will have higher depreciation. When your inflation lowers, you will have lower depreciation. And this is what we are seeing in this graph. So with this background, how has the CD performed under the leadership of Nana Adodanqua Akufuado in the last three years? The answer is very simple. You look at this table, which looks at the average rate of depreciation of the CD since 1992. Between 1993 and 1996, first term of the Fourth Republic, the average rate of depreciation of the CD was 27.95%. 97 to 2000, 25.19%. 2001 to 2004, we drastically reduced it under President Kufu to 11.4%. And 2005 to 2008, the second term, to 6.7%. 2009 to 2012, 10.9%. Under the NDC government of 2013 to 2016, it was 18%. Under Nana Adodanqua Akufuado, it is for the first three years, 8.7%. So you see from this table that the CD exchange rate under the MPP from 2017 to 2019 is twice as stable as it was under the NDC from 2013 to 2016. It has depreciated by 50% less, right? We are twice as stable under the MPP. And you should know that under the NDC, our currency was basically depreciating at the speed of Usain Bolt. Now, a two miracle. Under the MPP, we have arrested the rapid depreciation of the CD, and we will make no apologies for that. We have arrested the rapid depreciation of the CD. But why does the NDC, in the face of such incontrovertible evidence, why do they keep insisting that they can do a better job of managing the CD? In the face of such incontrovertible evidence? Ladies and gentlemen, it is like you have taken an exam with somebody and they score 40% and you score 80%. And they come out to say they know the subject better than you. What you way be da? What you way be da? Wa ko churwa wa nyah 40%. Ma ko churwa ma nyah 80%. Usi, u ni msa, eh eh, chemi. Where hu way be da? In fact, in fact, in the history of the Fourth Republic, the history of the Fourth Republic, Akufuado, the president, Nana Adodanqua Akufuado, has the best performance for any first-term government since 1992. The best performance. The data is there, the best performance. The overall best, of course, is Kufu's government so far, but that was the second term. So MPP will take number one, will take number two position. That we are the best that that the under Nana Akufuado as far as managing the depreciation of the CD, the best performance for any first-term government since 1992. All the worst performances happened under the NDC. They hold the record for the first worst performance, the second worst performance, and the third worst performance since 1992. But notwithstanding that they are the worst performers, they still want to challenge the best performance. Eh, asamo. Ladies and gentlemen, at the end of 2008, wait here. At the end of 2008, the exchange rate of the CD to the dollar was 1.18, 1.18 CDs to the dollar. They came into office and after eight years, they moved the exchange rate to 4.2 CDs to the dollar. So they quadrupled the nominal value of the exchange rate. It's not even triple jump, they add one jump to it to make it quadruple jump, right? It's not triple jump, they made it quadruple jump from one to four, from one to four. Now, for those of you who know your mathematics or arithmetic, you know the percentage change from one to four is very significant, isn't it? We have gone from 4.2 to 5.35 in just three years in a row. If you go from four to five versus one to four, is it the same percentage increase, right? One, you are getting close to 200 and something percentage increase, another, you are around 20, 20%. It is not the same. Indeed, the MPP for for the for us, if the CD is to match what the NDC record is, we will have to do a quadruple jump, which means we have to move from four close to 16 to be able to match their record. Is that is that clear? Yeah, if you are going to match their record in terms of the nominal change in the currency, if you quadruple the four, you will go towards 16. But we have only gone from four to 5.35 and they are making noise. So thankfully, ladies and gentlemen, this year, the CD is performing quite well and reflecting the fundamentals. And currently, the CD is the best performing currency in the world against the US dollar. As we speak this year with an appreciation of 3.4%. Ladies and gentlemen, the data shows that Ghana's macroeconomic fundamentals are strong. Indeed, the strength of Ghana's fundamentals was confirmed recently by Moody's Ratings, which changed Ghana's sovereign ratings from B3 with a stable outlook to B3 with a positive outlook. This is unprecedented for an election year, for an election year to have that sort of um change in the ratings outlook. Standard and Poor's also upgraded Ghana's sovereign credit rating from B- to B with a stable outlook last year. This was the first upgrade by Standard and Poor's for Ghana in 10 years. This is a strong affirmation of the positive assessment by international financial markets of Ghana's economic fundamentals. In fact, at the time President Kufu left office, Ghana's sovereign credit rating with Standard and Poor's was B+. This fell after eight years of NDC government to B-. And the President, Nana Akufuado's government is bringing this rating back up again. This is clearly a testament to the solid policies and reforms yielding fruits. Just last week, Ghana successfully issued the longest-dated euro bond ever issued by a Sub-Saharan African country, with investors placing $15 billion of orders for Ghana's 41-year bond. We issued a 41-year bond, the longest in the history of Sub-Saharan Africa, and it was eight times oversubscribed, eight times oversubscribed. That is remarkable vote of confidence in the economy of Ghana. The seven-year bond issued attracted the lowest coupon ever for Ghana at 6.375%. 6.375%. When the NDC issued a similar bond in 2016, it attracted it attracted 9.25%. Just look at the difference. 9.25, 6.3. Huge gap in interest rates. It means they are more confident in the economy under the MPP than under the NDC. And they are willing to, to give us lower interest rates for that. I'm now, ladies and gentlemen, want to touch on a subject that is very, very important to Ghanaians. This is the banking sector cleanup that the Bank of Ghana has undertaken. There's too much propaganda around the issue and we need to understand it and understand it well. So, as I noted earlier, we inherited a financial system that was weak and fragile with several institutions that had collapsed or were on the verge of collapse. Bank of Ghana, in cleaning up and strengthening the financial sector, revoked the licenses of nine banks, 23 savings and loans, and 386 microfinance companies. Many of these companies were not working at all anyway. They were dead. The Bank of Ghana did not just do this because they felt it was time to create suffering for depositors and difficulties for the owners of those institutions. As the NDC is forcing us to believe. Rather, the central bank did this cleanup to protect the financial system and save hard-earned monies of hard-working men and women like those bustling at Swami Magazine, Mercy Guemo, and the doom right now as I speak. Furthermore, we should all note that many of these financial institutions were dead. And many cases were not, in many cases, they were not even paying their depositors or employees at all or regularly. There were countless instances where customers would travel several kilometers for just 200 CDs, withdraw, and they were told to go and come another day. This had become an unending spin for these good and innocent people. Cobra, cobras ah. Indeed, the current central bank leadership inherited what was pretty much like a body with a cancer in the toe. If you don't give up that toe in time to end the rot, you will soon move from one with a rotten toe to one without a leg. Because the rot will eventually spread to your hip and then you are going to have to lose the entire leg. The swift and decisive action taken by the new management team at the Bank of Ghana provided relief for the financial system as a whole through the funds provided by the government for depositor payout. Ladies and gentlemen, let us remember that the failures of these financial institutions that we witnessed were a direct result of a system of poor licensing, non-existent capital, weak corporate governance, related party transactions, and so on. And this has actually hurt so many innocent people, depositors and employees alike. The NDC government and the previous management of the Bank of Ghana had ample time to address the impending failures. They were aware of the problems in 2015 in the case of banks and as far back as 2012 in the case of savings and loans and microfinance companies. In fact, President Mahama in the State of the Nation address in 2016 stated as follows, and I want to quote the former president. He said, and I quote, "Mr. Speaker, over the past five years, there has been a proliferation of microfinance companies. These companies come under the direct supervision of the Bank of Ghana. Unfortunately, lack of effective supervision has resulted in many cases in which microfinance companies licensed by Bank of Ghana have breached the rules and created supposed pyramid schemes that have eventually come crashing down. One such case is DKM. DKM with super-high interest rates between 50% and 55% promise is believed to have caused a loss to its clients of 77 million. Many depositors have lost their livelihood." End quote. This was the State of the Nation address in 2016. So the governments were aware of the problem and they had been aware of this problem for over five years for savings and loans and since 2015 for the banks. But they had no courage to deal with the cancer at the heart of the banking. They had no courage to deal with it. Even in opposition, I alerted the country that on the basis of available data, eight banks were likely to collapse. I'm sure many of you remember. I, as an opposition member, said, "Looking at the data, eight banks will collapse. You need to do something about it." But they did nothing. They refused to act. Thanks to the Bank of Ghana's cleanup exercise and the government's decision to step in to provide financial support to ensure an orderly exit of the failed institutions, over a million depositors have had access to their deposits already and over 7,000 jobs have been saved as a result of employees who have been taken on by the GCB or Consolidated Bank Ghana Limited, or the receivers. Employees whose salaries and employee benefits have been unpaid by the defunct institutions have been paid or are being paid by receivers. Can you imagine what would have happened in this country if 4.6 million depositors had lost their deposits? Can you imagine what would have happened in this country? If we had allowed this collapse for 4.6 million depositors to lose their deposits and over 10,000 individuals who have lost their jobs? The benefits of the banking sector cleanup exercise are evident for all to see. We now have a stronger and more resilient banking sector than ever before. And the deposits in the banking system have increased significantly as customers' confidence in the system has rebounded. We should never forget, ladies and gentlemen, we should never forget that under the NDC, we had the messy liquidations of the BCCI in 1999 and the closure and liquidation of, by the Bank of Ghana in the year 2000 of the Cooperative Bank and the Bank for Housing and Construction. Also, under NDC, the collapse of DKM and the proliferation of unlicensed financial services such as Piram, R5, Godislaw Farm Club, Men's Gold, and others that took advantage of their customers. With this background, I find the NDC's newfound care for indigenous firms quite baffling, given the number of indigenous firms that collapsed under four years of doom-saw under their government. Why didn't their government bail those firms out? Those firms that collapsed as a result of doom-saw? Where were the specific policies to support them? Do they know how many jobs were lost? What did they do about that if they cared so much about jobs? What about the jobs of the microfinance companies that collapsed under their watch? Did those people not matter? Well, still, they are telling people, they are telling people, the people of Ghana, that they would have kept the indigenous institutions alive, even after they found that they had obtained their licenses in some cases based on false and non-existent capital or after it became obvious that they had siphoned off depositors' funds and the liquidity support that the Bank of Ghana had provided to those institutions. Is their idea of an indigenous financial sector one that is characterized by fraud or unlawful activities? Ladies and gentlemen, if you own a business and you employ somebody and they bring their certificate, you employ them, give them a job, and then later on you find out that they have actually presented a fake certificate to obtain the job and not only that they are stealing your money to build a house, will you not sack, sack them from work? Will you not sack them from work? You will not keep them in, in employment? Will you say that because this person is from my village, I can keep him with a fake certificate and allow him to continue stealing my money? You wouldn't say that. A lot of these banks were engaged in fraudulent practices and poor corporate governance and the licenses, some of the licenses were obtained fraudulently. And therefore, the Bank of Ghana had to take action against them. We cannot say simply because you are indigenous banks, we should allow you to collapse the entire banking system. Nobody takes any pleasure in revoking a license of any institution. It must be a painful exercise. And I'm sure the Bank of Ghana, um, you know, took its time in doing this. But it is important to note that all the nine indigenous banks that were closed were to a large extent taken over by two Ghanaian indigenous banks, GCB and CBG. So we are ensuring stronger Ghanaian ownership in the banking sector. Also, the Ghana Amalgamated Trust, 100% government of Ghana ownership, has successfully invested in four indigenous banks that were unable to meet the new capital requirements. It is noteworthy, let us note that no bank, no bank was closed only on account of not meeting the new minimum capital requirement of 400 million. No bank was closed because they couldn't meet that. There were other matters that resulted in closures. Ladies and gentlemen, government has already spent over 13 billion. This is unplanned. We had not budgeted for it. 13 billion Ghana CDs paying depositors of banks and other financial institutions. And President Nana Adodankwa Akufuado gave the assurance on 24th of December last year in his Christmas message. And it's an assurance I want to repeat because it doesn't seem to have been carried far. And it is an assure, assurance that no depositor, no depositor of a savings and loan or a microfinance institution will lose any of their deposits, not even one person. No depositor. No depositor will lose. So we want fairness. What we have done for those who have deposited in the banks, we are going to do the same for those who have deposited in the savings and loans and the microfinance. Everybody will get 100% of their deposits back. That is going to happen. And, and it is starting. Because all these depositors, this lost, you know, through no fault of their own. So the government has asked the receiver, working with the Bank of Ghana, to expedite the validation and payment of the depositors so that all the depositors will receive their monies after their validation. I also want to add that we have also, the president has also said that if we are treating all the savings and loans depositors in this manner and making sure we are giving all of them 100% of their deposits, then we should extend it to the DKM depositors and also give them 100% of their deposits. So they will also now be included in the refunds so that we, they will receive their deposits. So we are therefore cleaning up the mess. We are cleaning up the mess the NDC created in the financial sector. The NDC was unable to do it. They were aware of the problem, but they refused to act. Given their management of the economy, they could not find the money even to pay teacher training allowance or nursing training allowance. Where would they have found 13 billion Ghana CDs to pay to depositors to rescue them from the collapse of the banks? They couldn't do it. They didn't have the space to do it. But now, we know, and I am sure, that left to the NDC, our banking system would have collapsed by now if we had left this to the NDC. But now they are going around saying, "Oh, we are going to pay everybody their, their money." You couldn't pay teacher training allowance. Ah, where are you going to get the 13 billion? From your management? The Ashantis have approved it. Ashantifuwa muwa be. Muwubbe se. Se kwa tukwase Obama wontoma. See anything? Enya sa. Se kwa tukwase Obama wontoma. See anything? If they could have done it, they would have done it a long time ago. So ladies and gentlemen, we are cleaning up the banking sector. We are now moving into the real sector of the economy. We promised in our manifesto that we are going to move this economy from a focus on taxation to a focus on production. So notwithstanding the revenue challenges that we inherited, we took the decision to reduce taxes in the economy. We understood that the tax burden on individuals and businesses was high following the high tax increases under the NDC regime. We were aware that this could worsen our revenue challenges in the short term. But we were of the firm conviction that reducing taxes will spare growth and increase revenues in the medium to long term. In fulfillment of our promise to move the economy from a focus on taxation to a focus on production and growth, we have thus far reduced at least 15 separate taxes. Reducing these taxes was a brave decision. For any manager of an economy, you come in with an economy which is in very, very dire straits and your first action is to reduce taxes. It's not conventional. It is not orthodox. It is unconventional and unorthodox. But we knew it was the right policy for Ghana and we went for it. So, in fact, no such broad-based reduction in taxes has ever been implemented in Ghana's history. Since 1957, no such broad-based reduction in taxes has been implemented. You see from the table, we abolished the 17.5% VAT on real estates, abolished the 17.5% VAT on selected imported medicines, abolished the 17.5% VAT on financial services, abolished the import duty on spare parts, abolished the 1% import levy, abolished the 17%, 17.5% VAT on domestic airline tickets, abolished the levies imposed on KIAA, reduced import duty for all goods excluding vehicles, 50% in vehicles, 30%. Abolished the excise duty on petroleum, provided a full corporate tax deduction deduction for private universities who plow back 100% of their profits into the university, reduced the national electrification scheme levy from 5% to 3%. Reduced the special petroleum tax rate from 17% to 3% to 13%. Replaced the 17.5% VAT with a flat rate of 3% and granted capital gains tax exemption on stocks traded on the Ghana Stock Exchange. So this is phenomenal. You know, and we expected this to help us boost. Despite these tax reductions, the data shows that revenue collection in nominal CD terms has actually increased by 25%. terms has actually increased by 25% annually since 2017. In terms of real growth, the average annual real growth before 2017 of revenue was 7.2% and after 2017 it is 8.4% despite all these reductions. It is also important to note that the average dollar equivalent of collections before 2017 was 5.89 billion dollars a year, and after 2017 it's been 7.57 billion US dollars a year. Beyond the reduction in taxes, we proceeded to focus on production in the real sector. Virtually every government has noted the need for Ghana to change the structure of the economy through diversification and by shifting from the focus on raw materials to value addition. This is the key pillar in Nana Akufwado's Ghana Beyond Aid agenda. To accomplish this, we are implementing the following programs. Planting for food and jobs, we are increasing, we have seen a major increase, production of cassava rice, maize, soya, plantain and so on, we are actually exporting these goods now. We've established the Ghana Commodities Exchange, one district, one factory is on course, within 79 or so factories and schemes are at various stages of construction. Um, the process of starting an integrated box site and aluminium industry is a major step in this diversification and innovative financing. The Ghana Box Site and Aluminium Development Corporation law has been passed, the Ghana Integrated Aluminium Development Corporation has been established, and we are doing a similar thing for the iron and steel industry. A national automotive policy has been brought out, and we will see, I think next month, Volkswagen will be in Ghana to establish a car assembly plant in Ghana. Volkswagen, and by August we expect Toyota to do the same, and we'll continue giving incentives to Kantanka as well as all of these to get the local production going. So ladies and gentlemen, economic growth which was on the declining trend has been restored. GDP growth was 8.1% in 2017, 6.8% in 2018, and is projected at 7% in 2019, and this is compared to 3.4% in 2016. Ghana's GDP growth now for three years in a row is amongst the fastest in the world. For three years in a row, our GDP growth is amongst the fastest in the world. Non-oil growth has increased from 4.6% in 2016 to 5.8% in 2018, and a projected 5.9% in 2019. The recent growth performance has been driven by industry and agri sectors, and agri particularly reflecting the effect of the policy interventions in the sector, most notably the planting for food and jobs. This has resulted in an increase in agri sector output from 2.9% in 2016 to 6.8% in 2018, and a projected 6.4% in 2019. Industry growth has increased from 4.3% in 2016 to 15.7% in 2017, 10.6% in 2018, and a projected 8.8% in 2019. And the growth in the service sector has almost doubled from 2.8% in 2016 to 5.4% in 2019. So quite clearly, ladies and gentlemen, when you look at the real sector, we promised that we will move the economy from taxation to production, and the real sector you definitely see, we have reduced the taxes and we have seen production going up with the interventions we are making in agriculture and industry, and it is good economic management. Ladies and gentlemen, Ghanaian society, I want to talk about the formalization of our economy. Ghanaian society and micro, small business continues to be largely informal. In such an environment, access to the services targeting the delivery of public services to those who need these services the most tends to be difficult, and in most cases it depends on who you know. For the banking sector, lending rates are high, partly because of the high information problems in establishing identity and in verifying ownership of property. These have to change if we are aspiring to become a modern middle-income economy. It is for all these reasons that we are aggressively pursuing the agenda to formalize the Ghanaian society through digitization. With digitization, we are introducing new and more efficient ways of doing things, and we are curbing corruption. So far, the agenda, we've started the issue of national ID cards. This is something that has been on the agenda for a very long time, but thankfully by the grace of God, by the end of this year, Ghana will have a fully functioning national ID card system. That is fantastic. As at last Friday, we had over 8 million people who have been registered. Currently, we are registering about 115,000 people every day. By the end of March, we would have 12 million people registered, and soon after we should hit our target of 16 million people we registered. And that is going to be a major change for this country. Most people don't even understand the huge implication of having a unique identifier for everybody. It will be the anchor for integrating all databases in the country. Currently, less than 2 million people are registered for tax identification numbers, less than 2 million out of our population of 13 million. But once we complete the national ID exercise this year, our proposal is to convert all the national ID numbers into tin numbers. So immediately you do that, you will have 60 million plus tax identification numbers for everybody. A big problem would have been solved, and we would have brought everybody into the tax net, and that would be a real major, major accomplishment by Nana Akufwado. We've implemented the digital address system. There's no location in Ghana today on water or land that does not have a unique address. DVLA, we have digitized driver's licenses and vehicle registrations, we've digitized the passport office. So today, getting a passport is very easy. If you go online, we've made the ports paperless, you can renew your NHRS on your mobile phone, mobile money interoperability has been brought, and you have interoperability between bank accounts and mobile wallets and within different companies. By the way, mobile money interoperability that we have introduced in Ghana is the first of its kind in Africa, the first of its kind. There's no country, there's no country in Africa that has this type of mobile money interoperability. And, you know, places like Kenya only have interoperability in the telcos. No country has been able to achieve interoperability between the mobile wallets, the telcos, and the bank accounts. We are the only country that has been able to do that. And because we have done that, we are going to reap a lot of benefits from it. We're going to reap a lot of benefits and bring a lot of people into financial inclusion. Thanks to the Bank of Ghana, next month, in March, Ghana will launch what we call the universal QR code payment system next month, which will make it possible for all retailers, all retailers, including the people who sell coffee, brokman, and wache on the street, all retailers will be able to have the capacity to receive payments from their customers directly on their mobile phone, directly, without a point-of-sale device being necessary. This is a major, major transformation. All retailers, you'll be able to receive the, even trotro, if you want to pay by your mobile wallet, they'll receive it, they'll have their own QR code, right? So maybe trotro owners will be very happy because maybe they don't get the full account. But everybody will be able to receive. So wache sellers, and so you don't have to keep a lot of cash if you are selling things so that armed robbers will come and get your cash. If we all start paying using our Momo or bank card, we'll just pay through the mobile phone, and the matter will be finished, your money will be in your bank account. We are introducing this, the first country in Africa to introduce a universal QR code is Ghana, and we are introducing it next month. We are introducing it next month. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not all. As I said, we have put in place the bill pillars, and it's now time for us to reap the benefits of what we have put in place. Ladies and gentlemen, we have completed a pilot, and on February 18th, that is in less than two weeks' time, I will launch a nationwide mobile application that will allow ECG customers to buy units for their meters through their mobile phone at any So if it is 2:00 AM in the morning and you have run out of units, you pick up your mobile phone, put in the digits, and the meter will come on, and all of it will go. So we will launch this on February 18th by the grace of God. And, and I must add, you will also be able to buy units for someone else, so it's not just for you, and so it will create problems for people. You get a call at 3:00 AM in the mornings, say, bra, me units no asango, tobi mommy. So we are going to create a new problem, you know. But digitization is going to reduce a lot of inefficiency and make life easier for all our people, and reduce a lot of corruption in the system, and this is what we are doing. We have linked the emergency 112 number with a digital address system. Uh, as you know, we have delivered ambulances, one constituency, one ambulance, and we have linked all the ambulances. We can tell from the command center where each ambulance is at any time in the country, where each ambulance is. We've also linked the ambulances to the digital address system. So if you use your GhanaPost GPS system to call the ambulance, the ambulance center will know exactly where you are, your address, your digital address, the exact location. And it is important that all of us get used to using the GhanaPost GPS because sometimes you may be in your home and armed robbers are attacking, you need to call the police, but you don't have time to explain exactly where your house is because it is maybe in some lungu lungu somewhere, right? That you have, if you use your GhanaPost GPS to call 112 or the emergency button, immediately the command center will know that this is the address where you are calling from, and then the police will come there immediately. You don't need to explain anything, you just say, I need help, that's all, I'm under attack. So you do it. So we have linked the GhanaPost GPS with the emergency system and the ambulance system, and Ghana has now got a working ambulance system. In addition to help the ambulances, we have employed drones to deliver critical medicines and blood across many health facilities in the country. And Ghana today is the world's leading drones medical supplier, the world, we are in the lead, the world's leading supplier of medicines by drone. It's a remarkable technology that is saving lives, snake bites, you know, murders, giving birth, in very remote areas, we are able to get to them, and we will continue to do this. So ultimately, digitization of the economy will improve efficiency and reduce corruption and de-risk the business environment. And for me, one of the exciting things about this digitization, because when I was at the Bank of Ghana as deputy governor, I kept, you know, dealing with this issue, and we kept talking, how do we bring down interest rates? It's a big, big issue. The surest way to bring down interest rates is to formalize the economy so that when you go to the bank, they will know your identity, you know, this is who you are, they know where you live, so there is no risk, or the risk is minimized in lending to you. So for me, when we digitize this economy, you will see interest rates also beginning to come down, and I'm very excited about this country. I believe that in another two to three years, the Ghana we are seeing today will be a very different Ghana, a very different Ghana. It's not long, give us another two to three years, when we put all this together, it will be a new Ghana for you, and I'm very excited that the promise that Nana Akufwado made to modernize this country, we are in a position to do so. Ladies and gentlemen, to allow access to the internet across public tertiary institutions and senior high schools, government has awarded the contract for the provision of free wifi to all senior high schools and tertiary institutions. There is so much knowledge, there is so much knowledge on the internet, and we have to allow our senior high schools to access that knowledge. And we promised free wifi, and we are going to deliver free wifi to all senior secondary So the program is going to kick off this year, the program will kick off this year, and an initial set of tertiary schools and senior high schools will be kicking off, including KNUST, by the way, you'll be in the initial set of schools. I want, once we are talking about senior high schools, I want to talk a little bit about free SHS. Dr. Yawo Juchum is here, he's the master, but he has taught me a few things. I would say, um, I must say, and yeah, Dr. Mathieu Napo and his deputy, they've done an excellent job on free SHS. Ladies and gentlemen, the empirical evidence is very persuasive that the key to economic transformation is human capital, not natural resources. The Americans are with natural resources, but it hasn't helped them in any way. The evidence shows that what matters is human capital. This is why President Nana Akufwado has placed an emphasis of making sure that every Ghanaian child, regardless of the financial circumstances of the parent, will have access to free high school education. This was the promise we made prior to the election in 2016, and it is a promise that we have fulfilled. I must say that the free SHS policy is the most significant social intervention program introduced in Ghana since independence. There's no doubt about it, since independence, it is the most significant. We are investing for the future, we are investing and building capacity for the future of this country, and we have to think about the future, not about ourselves. However, in introducing this free SHS, we had a big challenge. We did not have sufficient infrastructure in most schools to accommodate the increased numbers. The free SHS has resulted The Free SHS has resulted in a 69% increase in enrollment, 69% in enrollment. Many of these students would have been sitting at home. Today, 1.2 million children are benefiting from Free SHS. The question that we faced when we tried to implement this Free SHS policy, the question that we faced was, if we don't have enough infrastructure, how can we tell whose child should stay at home and whose child should go to school? Who should stay at home? In response to this challenge, we introduced the innovative double-track system as a temporary solution to the problem while we construct new schools. The thinking here with the double-track system is very similar to how our churches have the first service and the second service and the third service with the same building. Because the church has been built, but the people are many. So all of them want to come and hear the word of God on Sunday. So should we say to people, "Ayema, tinafiye", or can we say, "You come for first service, you come for second service, you come for third service, and all of you will hear the word of God?" So this is our innovative solution and a temporary solution to a problem that we face. We will say, "Okay, let's leverage our existing schools. Some people will come at one time, go home, and another set will come." We are not saying this is how it's going to be, but this is the temporary solution whilst we build more and more schools to do this. So I would say that it is better to educate a child even under a tree than to let them be sitting home. It is better to educate a child. Because if we have said that they should not be, we should not do double-track, it means we could not have implemented Free SHS. We would have been saying, "Let's wait to finish them." In fact, if you apply the same logic, national health insurance, we couldn't have implemented. Because we would have said, "Let's wait and build all the hospitals before we implement national health insurance." It was introduced in 2003, but even today in 2020, we are still building hospitals. But we have to make a start. And this is why Nana Akufuado said, "Let us implement this double-track. Let us build the schools and in good time, they will replace the double-track system with a single track for everybody." Those who are criticizing the double-track system have not been able to offer one alternative. Not one alternative. They are just saying, "I will abolish the double-track." But they won't tell you what they are going to replace it with. And they cannot tell you because abolishing the double-track means abolishing Free SHS. That is what it is. Because you have to be able to tell me, you can all reason, tell me what you are going to do. They cannot tell us. Up to now, they've been criticizing Free SHS since 2008. Up to now, they don't have an alternative. So this is why government is investing in the construction of schools and new infrastructure. And I must say, it was very heartwarming when we read about a request from the government of Kenya. The government of Kenya has asked our own good ministers of education to come and teach them how to make the double-track work for their country. I know that Dr. Yawedukchum was there to give them a brief on what we are doing. And they have sent a letter requesting the Minister for Education, Dr. Mathieu Pokuprempe, to come and teach them how to do the double-track system in Kenya so that they can do it. So let us appreciate what we have. We are thinking long-term, but we are not going to compromise the education of our children. Ladies and gentlemen, we need a government that is committed to the Free SHS system. A government that is prepared to commit the resources to finance it. Can we trust Free SHS to someone who did not believe in it in the first place? Can we trust Free SHS to someone who said it was a gimmick? Can we trust it to someone who said if he had 2 billion Ghana series, he would not spend it on Free SHS? Can you trust Free SHS with someone who says he would abolish the double-track but has no alternative? We cannot take that risk. You can only trust the Free SHS system with Nana Adodankwa Akufuado. He's the only person you can trust the Free SHS system with. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the key promises that Nana Akufuado made was to ensure that the poor are not excluded from access to infrastructure. This is the rationale behind the setting up of the Development Authority. And after just three years in office, there has been a remarkable provision of infrastructure for the poor and deprived communities across the country. We have undertaken and are undertaking many projects that matter to the poor in our villages and communities, in addition to projects in the urban towns and cities. These include water, toilets, markets, school blocks, health facilities, police stations, and so on. The massive investment in water and sanitation infrastructure, for example, has resulted in an increase in the number of open defecation-free communities from 410 in 2016 to over 4,700 communities by the end of 2019. This is major increase. We will outdoor, ladies and gentlemen, we've done a lot of work putting together the data on infrastructure because we want to show the country what we have done in every district and constituency in the country. We've put all this data together and it is just remarkable. I'm sure it will surprise a lot of Ghanaians. But today, we are going to focus on the data on our manifesto promises. By April in the next quarter, we will present the data on infrastructure and it was going to be a very remarkable piece of data. So ladies and gentlemen, this year, the president has said is the year of roads. It's the year of Amouakouata, the roads minister. And I can assure you that so much is going on, the resources are being put together. And Ashanti, you will see that this year is the year of roads and path. Very, very soon, you will see that this year, AMPA is the year of roads. We are mobilizing and a lot of roads, critical roads, have started and we will be taking off very, very soon. And so let's be patient and you will see what we are doing. Let me now come to our manifesto promises. Ladies and gentlemen, it is clear that so much has been done in the management of the economy. But how has this translated into the fulfillment of our manifesto promises to the people of Ghana? In tracking and measuring our progress after three years for each of these commitments in a way that is intuitive and easily understood by the generality of Ghanaians, we have adopted three metrics or three categories in assessing our manifesto promises. We have divided the assessment into three categories. One is promises delivered. These are promises we have fully implemented, so we have delivered on those promises. Then we have promises that we are delivering. So if you take a promise like Free SHS, we have delivered on it. So we'll count it under promises delivered. Then there are those that we are delivering. We've started delivering, but we haven't completed. Like one district, one factory. We have started the process. We've created a number of factories, but we are ongoing, like one village, one dam, and so on. They have not yet completed the process, but we are on course. It is on track and we are moving. And then there are those that are pending or those that we haven't started work on at all. Like the passage of the consumer protection law that we said we will do, we haven't yet done it. Ladies and gentlemen, we have tabulated a total of 388 promises in our manifesto. That's quite a large number in total. And what we are looking at for the overall score of our assessment, we are just looking at the raw count of the promises. Of the 388 promises, how many have you delivered? How many are you delivering? How many are you pending? That is essentially the raw count. There is no weighting attached to each sector or anything. Here's the raw count of the promises. And I must say, and it is very, very important to note, that this is the first time in the history of Ghana that any political party has come to the people with an assessment of its promises to the people. No other party has done this. This is the first time this has happened and we think it's good for the governance of this nation. And we encourage all other parties who have governed in the past, it's not too late. They can come with their manifestos and tell us how much was actually accomplished. No government has done it. So let us look at the promises that we have delivered. And there are quite a lot. As I said, we have 388 promises. If you look at the agri sector, we said we will ensure that farming inputs are available in the farming communities at affordable prices and we have delivered. Promise to support private seed growers to increase supply of improved seeds to farmers, we've delivered. Promise to reintroduce compensation payments under Cocoa Disease Control Payments Program, we've delivered. Promise to expand local processing of cocoa, we've delivered. Promote capital ranching and facilitate land acquisition for its development, we've delivered. Provide patrol boats to stop foreign fishing vessels, we have delivered. We collaborate with the private sector to develop infrastructure for inland farming, we have delivered. Place fisher folk directly in charge of subsidized inputs at local outlets, we've delivered. Encourage local poultry processing, we have delivered. Support accelerated development of selected products, including grains and vegetables, we have delivered. Increase subsidies on retail prices of seeds and fertilizers, we've delivered. Support selected products with storage, transportation, and marketing, we've delivered. Reform and revive the national buffer stock, we have delivered. Improve fertilizer distribution, we have delivered. Have discussions with Burkina Faso for a more controlled spillage of the Bagre Dam, we have delivered. Revive the Grains Development Authority, we have delivered. Establish the Ghana commodity scheme, we've delivered. Restore overall macro stability, we have delivered. Reduce the rate of government borrowing, we have delivered. Reduce interest rates, we have delivered. Shift from taxation to production, we have delivered. Enact the fiscal responsibility law, we have delivered. Fiscal council, we have delivered. Financial Safety Council, we have delivered. Banking the Ambank, we have delivered. Abolish the special import levy, we have delivered. Abolish 17.5% VAT on medicines, we have delivered. 17.5 VAT on financial services, we have delivered. Abolish 5% VAT, we have delivered. Reduce, abolish 17.5 VAT on domestic airline tickets, we have delivered. Reduce VAT on micro and small enterprises from 17.5 to 3%, we have delivered. Offer tax incentives to young entrepreneurs, we have delivered. Fix the basics of the government machinery to make it work in acquiring driver's licenses, passports, registering businesses, and so on, we have delivered. You know, encourage the colleges of education to upgrade their curriculum to ensure they produce graduates that will teach well-equipped and critical-thinking population, we have delivered. Undertake a national audit of skills and competencies and in a bid to align training opportunities and resources to respond to national and local human resource demands, we have delivered. Ensure proper decentralization of teacher recruitment management, we have delivered. Restore teacher training allowance, we have delivered. Restore allowances to Arabic instructors, we have delivered. Restore book and research allowances to lecturers, we have delivered. Introduce history of Ghana as a subject in primary schools, we have delivered. Integrate school sports as part of school activities, we have delivered. Abolish the payment of utility bills by students, we have delivered. Redefine basic indication from kindergarten to include senior high school, covering vocational and agricultural and technical schools, we have delivered. Implement Free SHS, we have delivered. Increase the amount of loans to the student loan scheme, we have delivered. Develop the 10-year power master plan to meet the medium-term, long-term needs, energy needs, we have delivered. End doomsaw, we have delivered. Reduce electricity tariffs, we have delivered. Ensure procurement of new power projects are executed permanently through PPP and IPP arrangements, we have delivered. Ensure there is sufficient reserve margin to ensure stability of our energy system, we have delivered. So this is just a few of those that we have delivered. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, if you put all of this together and we're making the data available, because it is, of all the three, in all, as I said, we made 388 promises in our manifesto. The most recent validation exercise that we undertook at the end of January 2019 shows that we have either delivered or we are delivering on 78% of our promises. We have either delivered or we are delivering on 78% of our promises. Of course, this 70%, 78% is an aggregate figure. You can go to the sectoral breakdown which we provide to show you what we are doing for each sector. You can see that on the economy, we can show you what we have done for each. But if you can go to the percentages for each sector, we can show you that if you look at youth and sports, we have delivered or we are delivering 79%. You go to trade and industry, 82% with 18% pending. Tourism and creative arts, about 46% with 54% pending. Social development, 70%, security, 70%, and so on. Education, 94%, the economy, 80%, shiftancy, 80%, foreign affairs, 100%. Governance, corruption, and public accountability, 53%, health, 65%, infrastructure, 78%. So you can see the breakdown. And all of this, we are going to put it on the internet for everybody to go and interrogate the data themselves. This, we are going digital. This one is not Green Book. So the website, we are putting it on the, if you go to the website and everybody can go, it should be live by now, www.delivery.gov.gh and you will find it. When we outdoor our infrastructure data, it will also be there. You will search for infrastructure projects by constituency, by sector, and so on. But for now, we are looking at the manifesto promises. And if you look at the dial, we are at 78%. But this is just after three years, three years of work. And we are still working to do more. We are still working to do more. And as I said, this is the first time any government in our democratic dispensation has brought its performance in front of the people. Say, "This is what we promised and this is what we are doing." Ladies and gentlemen, what is undeniable is that there has been a remarkable turnaround in the Ghanaian economy. Over the last three years, the difference is one of vision, dedication and competence. We have outperformed the NDC in virtually every sphere of the economy. I mean, every sphere. We have appropriately combined economic theory as taught in our textbooks with the collective experience of the Economic Management Team and Cabinet under the leadership of the President Nana Adodanqua Akufuado in the management of the economy. Can you imagine, ladies and gentlemen? Can you imagine an engineer, a doctor, a lawyer or an accountant who after qualifying decides not to use what they learnt in school? To forget about everything you learnt in the textbooks when you are actually practicing? Can you imagine that? Unfortunately, if you don't take your time and read and understand your textbooks in a subject like economics, you will end up mismanaging the economy with a confirmed economic management techniques with disastrous results. Isn't it? If you don't read your textbooks and understand them well, we have seen it. You end up with a confirmed economic management techniques which will result in disaster. I have no doubt, I have no doubt that the NDC will come out and challenge what I have said here today. But when they come out, just ask them to bring contrary data. Don't, they shouldn't just talk. They should come with contrary data to contradict what I have said here today. And I bet you, when you challenge them, they will either start insulting you or they will run away to Burkina Faso. That is what is going to happen. Ladies and gentlemen, in conclusion, I would like to say that even though we have made a solid start, and it is a start, in our three years in office, we are not yet where we want Ghana to be. We have done a lot. Establish the Zongo Development Fund and all of that. Major, major things. But we are not yet where we want to be. We still have more to do. This year has been designated by the President as the Year of Roads and the country will soon see evidence of this. We have many more schools and hospitals to construct. We have malaria to eradicate. We have jobs to create, a digitization agenda to complete and so on. We also need to consolidate the gains that we have made so far. We will be the first to admit that we have not attained perfection in everything that we have done. But we are modernizing and transforming this country in fundamental ways for the future. So please, keep faith with us. Keep faith with the President, Nana Akufuado. The future is bright if we stay the course. That is why we are asking the good people of Ghana to give Nana Adodanqua Akufuado for more, to do more for you. Thank you for your attention. God bless you and God bless our homeland Ghana. Choboi! Nana do yuma su ampa, dey yuma. Pacho tunnu nu tunnu nu. Nana do yuma su ampa, dey yuma. Dey yuma su, dey yuma. Hey, choboi! Free S1 is S1 isa. S1 isa. One day, one F O ampa, dey yuma su. One day, one... Pacho obi ansorin jinaho. Obi ansorin jinaho. Obi ansorin jinaho. Yes, Remo. Wave your hand, wave your hand. Wave wonsa. Wave wonsa. Wave wonsa. Wave wonsa. Wave wonsa. Nana do yuma su ampa, dey yuma su. Hallelujah! Nana do yuma su ampa, dey yuma su. Thank you very much, 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 thank you very much. Nana Che. Your Excellency the Vice President, distinguished invited guests. That was a powerful presentation. This is called accounting to the people. This is called showing the evidence. Ladies and gentlemen, another big round of applause for His Excellency the Vice President. Another big round of applause for His Excellency the Vice President. Gradually, gradually, the program is... The first part of the program is coming to an end. You are aware that this is a two-day program, the Town Hall and Resorts Fair. After the first part, His Excellency will lead us and officially open the exhibition. The exhibition is photographic and video presentation of the work that has happened on the ground within these last two years. Unprecedented, uncontested and matched, the photographic evidence is out there. Before we get to that, His Excellency the Vice President has availed himself to speak to any queries that we may have and even take suggestions. This is not a government that is scared of accountability. Yes, ro akuntebu eti yemakwa insay, yenti ma mufon suno, ye wa asenbe bisah, ana se ajin chirebia, akwena ewoho ene, se ube to me e bisah, ana se oso wa chirewa ajini. I shall invite my boss, the Minister for Information, to moderate the Q and A. Our friends from the sounds, please prepare an extra mic for us. We have promised, we have delivered. Ya ka, ya ye. Miagbule, miagwe. Miato bo gatou miya lafia. Choboi! Miato bo gatou miya lafia. Choboi! Over to you, Honorable Minister for Information.
Thank you, Honorable Pius. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. His Excellency the Vice President is done with his presentation. We have some thirty minutes within which we will take questions and get answers from His Excellency, the Vice President and Ministers of State and Deputy Ministers who are here. There is a microphone available for the questions like we do at all our town hall meetings. You signal us, we direct the microphone to you. You have an opportunity to ask a question. We will take two questions from each of the rows here for this first part, two, 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 two. And then we will take responses and come back for the next set. I want to pray you to keep your questions simple and straight to the point so that we can take as many of them as possible. Ministers and Deputy Ministers who are here, please be on notice. You may be called to assist in responding to some of the questions. Pacho bo di, ano achre obobre, noe bisah o kosan. Nana do fi ajisso, ose buankra project, no? Akosi say, open in.
Eh, pacho, sorry. Bidi ene Emmanuel Enki, Honorable Emmanuel Enki. Achwa ngobe jaanoff, balakese. Eh, miti Honorable Patixia, akiaje eye pa noa. Ose pa manteri yeso, odi omo osro, eya mra. Esan fe obani skaoli etu pono eso. Nemo, dike se pa noa diye, yene wasi ano. Eyeye, disi pono, ene, eh, ene ene ya yuma. Na, ma se bisas, ho ne bo disi no, o local level no. Embe yuma kosho. Eyeye, asan e mafo. Adentina yitia disika, yitia mpika. Yentia asan e mafo, eka. Omo bo yuma kesiye, ama kosano.
Me pacho ya te, yada wasi, noa wasi bisah. Ya kasia be fa mienu mienu, inti kama yen fa bakoso enfie. Eh, ho, Francois. Pacho, kwa sia kakramami, ya fa bakua niha, yen kwa sia kakra, niyen fa bakoo. Na, ya fa mienu, mienu, miya sa fa bakoo, asay, ansan ampani fo, eya no. Emmanuel's question is why assembly members are not paid? And I imagine whether or not there are plans to pay assembly members. The first question is about the Buankra Port and Free Zone area. What's the plan for that? Yes, sir?
Yes, thank you very much. Please, my name is Maxwell Attar. I'm a broadcast journalist from Class Media Group. We are an operator of Class ninety-one point three FM in Accra. Please, unlike the failed Universal Bank, where we understand that all customers were all migrated to the Consolidated Bank of Ghana to receive their full deposit and payment. My understanding is that government has taken a new payment model when it comes to dealing with customers of the default savings and loans companies. Depositors are receiving a cap amount of up to twenty thousand Ghana cedis regardless of your investment. That is to say, if you have one million Ghana cedis locked up at any of the collapsed savings and loans companies like First Allied and Savings Company, you will receive twenty thousand Ghana cedis. Unfortunately, these depositors cannot have access to check their balance and they don't know what exactly government is going to do for them. So I want to find, I want to find out for President that moving forward, what is the guarantee that these people will receive the remaining amount after the twenty thousand Ghana cedis? And then, when exactly are they going to receive this? And then try to unveil payment plans for these people. Thank you very much, sir.
Maxwell, Maxwell, thank you for your question. We will take two more questions from this column, two more here and then one outstanding one here. May I kindly mention to our media colleagues? We have different platforms for media interaction with the President, etc. This one is for the general public, so if we can just stay our hand. Yes, sir?
My name is Douglas Owusu. Eh, pacho.
Pacho su di niye dey?
Douglas Owusu.
Okay.
From Achuman Wabiyeja Sounds. Eh, pacho. Depo, oman peyini napet dey chre, apa supapa apa. Na, Ashante Region, Kumasi, ya kwain, yes, re, sena. Nana bafo, eka ano. Na, dabey na sofo la. Ekwaino, ye ye, ama ahotto, ene, empatem patem o akwaini na, ewo, Kumasi, any Ashante Region. Dabey miye ye, na dabey miye we, ama eni je apa Ashanteme.
Owusu yada se, noa wasema, webisa. Francois, yen fa microphone, nomreni mka kra, na yen je one question. Transport Minister, oha say, me pacho, um, diniye, na Buankra Port question, no? Me ba oho. Um, Deputy Local Government Minister, oso oha, obe boye, eh, about assemblymen, payment, no? Pacho ma, yente odi no obobre?
My name is George Opone, Presiding Member of Kabri East.
Pacho say?
George Opone.
George.
Presiding Member for Kabri East Municipal Assembly. My question is, recently the Environment Ministry introduced a company called Ghana First to various assemblies and MMDs. And this, upon the strength of that, we entered into a contract with, um, with the company called Ghana First. The contracts have been awarded and all the contracts have built this, contracts have built these toilet facilities across the whole country. Is there any hope for the payment of these contractors? With respect to government intervention?
Thank you very much. That's a question about a private company called Ghana First that has contracted people to build for it. And you are asking whether there is any hope for the contractors who build for this private company, Ghana First? We will situate it properly and get a response. Can we come to this column to take two questions and then I'll take one final one from the back here before we get responses? Guta Chairman. Chairman yete o? Mesro, mesro, mesro. Obiya, obiya kosanane ye bakoo. Inti kainu to me ma yechro na, ye dihun komochi. Nana, brabisah koshim bakoo. Inti ma mimfa bakoo echre o, ewo column hasay. Okosan no, eyeye, eh, senya ye bo edye di fo SME lending, any micro and small scale lending, no? Eh, hoon she say ano, eti say, ye bema wa nu ye. One question at the back? There are senior high school students here. It would be good to hear from some of the senior high students if they have questions. We also would like to hear from women. Agou! 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 Pamcho, mpani mfo tiye dum. Nana, banthama he, eti ye dum. Oman, peni abedi ye chre, eti ye dum. Tye maya kasano, en wo form? Ye de ma ekumawa, noe wa kebi, niyini neti, open in kasa.
Me koshia, mi pi say, Ekoma Transport Minister. They say, yo, who is a driver, si ne, ye ba be twaba. Ne, si de, who is a petrol, oho, niya tumu ten pesos. Oho, niya tumu five pesos. Ama driver for no, omon tinie ma, somisi, anemppi ba ya, ye siye, bete tiye, ye yusi. Eh, then ye ndriver, si kwa debia, ye tu petrol mi. Inti, pesa mi busa minister say, adentino, otrama, GPR it you for. Omon tu tu fe ni mu, ansan emppi fa ba bontiya be kantha, meda ma say.
Meda say, okosan, Energy Minister, ewa hasay, Transport Minister, so ewa hasay. Inti, ye betu sa from Romaboaye, last question from this column.
Era, meda say. Ye freme osbona jeni boatin, asante atimsa uja aso. Ente kraw man penini aboye, ama mensi biwa ya pejama be municipality. Ente she she, ashe yasi biwa ha, ebini ho. Di brebe no man penini be dum ye. Ne department biya medicine ya aba e municipality, no? Sa asante atimsa yansabetimi ya kebi, meda say.
Mesu meda say. May I invite the Minister for Transport, Deputy Minister for Energy, Deputy Local Government Minister, please join me up here as we take some of these questions. Deputy Minister for Energy, Deputy Minister for Local Government, Minister for Transport, Minister for Roads. Deputy Minister for Energy, Deputy Minister for Local Government, Minister for Transport, Minister for Roads is also here. There's a question about Sofoline and progress of work on Ashanti roads as well. Transport Minister, we'll start with you, buankra port and transport fare increases.
Vice President, nanano, kaya she wa ha yena, let me say, mibusa okusan, ababuankra edian abane ye. Etume jina president and name, embejya nyangokwane ma kachamose, buankra project no. Procreation process no, ose bo no ba, yeso ba ya, ano amaswa mibisa obinye, eh ba 2017 no. Na, just government no, any wet bank for, authoritative process of redeveloping the buankra in Lampot, president gofona startiye. De lusu abano, muja tuhono, musa oma nyawo, until 2006, no mbekono, no mostatiye. Nanano, so de musi no, abayjuma no, ye ya, yeso ba ya, na dope, no ame juma, no sana de mobi. Ente, oman penyiswa me, oman iba utu for, ene nebe trust. Na, asaseno, niya tinse makumbi yenu bi, na ma yashua and say, asaseno, eh ho no ma, biyamfanesan kaya. And ye share development partners, and ye continue the procurement process. Na me ka, na machilemu, so de Vice President ka yeno, mesu miyebi, mi tumre na machilemusiye. Eh juma say, wo ya, ye fanyi mdivo, abo focusami ye kan transnational advisors. Omu ye price water for, ena wet bank in the government of Ghana faro, eh basembe kachamose. Obiya obetumi biya, no komu honu kubusha omo, procurement process no, ye yue, amo omodi abechre abain, omo debechre me. Ena menyo omu truste, any ye shem, ye shemu ya, eso omu kochomu report, na omu deba. Na, ye marti say, this week, by Friday no, omu de report, final report no beba. Ne ye, ye ye contractor, anas the company whoa, omu wabesi buankra port. Me bossu bio, transnational advisors no, ayeye price water house, eti wa ofu ye biya kobuso omo say. Buankra in Lampot no, omu nomuni abaya ngojuma, ye yue anas yenye, ombechre usay, ye yue, omu de report no beba. Na, ye chusu neba, obaba ye juma no, eto subio, buankra in Lampot, untu minya, in Lampota, railway line, enka. Enu tino oman penyini, eh si say, central railway line no, ye ye, ah ene, Minister waya, somtakwade, abedu takwa. Ye twasu sa abesu, Kristian Uni Valley, niya ba dumka, niya ba obuase, ye dabane endi buankra. Ente, me ma ma leshem, se eni na wachre, ana miyenu, ye deba tuja, eni ba buankra in Lampot no, obaba ye ngojuma, de kakwa be tumaka no. Afey, ma me be jina os, ma mi ma me, ana menya ba bibusa, okushe bio, ababu GPRT. Esremo, eh, si, ati morning ti, anye ma ubiye ti. GPRT for, ye ba abemu, omu fa omu pe, entu, ka konshemuda, ka, eh kanasa, fair, sorry, ka bo. Ka bo, omu fa omu pe, entu muda. Ye omu de say, ye wa shesia between abain, any GPRT for. Ye wa no ma mia sa, editeme, ka bo, fuel, spare parts, ena foreign estate. Asa, ni na kambom, asa, eh bro 10% ta, niya no ma truste. Na, ye de ka, wo tebetu ma, niya tu, ye tu nombatiso no ma tiso. Na me, me kashen yene, mesu ye ba, enfie mia sa no. Before that, na Afibiyar GPRT, go and check the record, no omutuka, eh bo mu, empre miyenu, ansana Afina endi. Because of good management systema, economic management say, ye diya banti. Three years na ye di no, GPRT, omato, ka bo mu mia sa, enu cha say Afibiyar no, omutu mbakoo. Vice President Kasembi, say fuel price no aba form, the fuel price aba ma, omutu. Na, uro ma, ekuobebre aba, bisah concern, eh bisah we, eh bin, eh basembe body, wo ma ne binima koka, ye koto ka bo mu, ye koyese. Na, eh say ye diyete, ye koka miyada, GPRT de, eh fa de say, omudi mrazo, omuni ya tra, eh no ma tran ye. Because ye wo ma niye ti no, ye diya kwak, ka bo no, ye tutu mbasa basa basa. This year, last year, eh no mutu, this year, omashye ye bo say, so de oman peni ku ma niye ti no, ye diya ka bo no, ye betu, de medama say.
Minister Haddad, asee, fuel prices are affecting transport buono, Deputy Energy Minister, ewa ha say, obekan bibiho afao.
Excellency Vice President, when it comes to fuel prices, as the excellency, the vice president said, we have managed it better. It's just like the exchange rate, fluctuates, it increases but also decreases when international prices of petroleum products change. But the rate of increase is what we have tried to manage, so that the burden on Ghanaians is minimized. And so, since we took over power, for example, taxes in percentage of total farm price was 24% when we took over from the NDC. Today, it is around 12%. And this is because we have been able to reduce some of the taxes, and in some cases, we have abolished. For example, the excise taxes on petroleum products were abolished completely. Secondly, the special petroleum taxes were reduced from 17% to 13%. In addition to this, we converted the tax from add valorem tax to specific tax. And then, of course, we are the first government to apply the stabilization levy. So that when prices are supposed to increase, because of the application of the stabilization levy, prices have stabilized. And so, it is not surprising that, as excellency the vice president observed, that during the NDC time, the cumulative percentage increase in petroleum prices was 29%. Under us, in three years, it's been just 13%. And so, if we didn't make these interventions, prices of petroleum products would have been higher and higher, and therefore, consumers would have been overburdened. So this is how we have managed the rate of increase in petroleum prices, even when international prices of crude oil or petroleum products have increased. In the NDC time, anytime prices went down, they did not increase, even though the factors demanded that they decreased. As a result, transport fares and prices of goods were always increased. Anytime there was an increase in petroleum prices. Today, because of the fluctuation, there are times the prices go up, there are times the prices go down. And so, we want to appeal also to our transporters. When prices go up, and they have basis to increase their fares, we understand that. But when prices calm down, last window, prices went down, but we did not see a corresponding decrease in transport fares. So we need to engage. Next week, prices are going to go down. And so, we expect that just as the increased prices, uh transport fares, when prices go up, when prices go down, we expect them to be fair. It's a deregulated market, but deregulation must operate within a fair market environment. So thank you very much, and we hope that we'll continue to better manage the prices of petroleum products.
Roads Minister, Sofoline kwayano akosi say, any akwayanho do akaw, eh ti, masimpatemo hane Ashanti no, eh hunsem to say. Honorable Minister responsible for roads.
Thank you, Minister. Excellency the President, Vice President, Chairman, colleague ministers, nanano. Papa, eh, those who who questions, be amanka, eh be amemwa. Nanano, se, ben hu ya ufi eh ba, modia obono, bangre ya untiyase. Mesu shemo, si ba bakupe, na, me ba, kana fo yina, any kumasi, eh hunu ya ye fiba, rose. Na, modia, President Ekufwado, abain, abowo akwane hunu, ye eh betiase. Unyakuwa omani Ghana for Madaroma, Moody, ome yishere President Ekufwado sa on 7th January 2017. Asat 7th January 2017, ofa Ghana akwane yina, na waki ka esyani highways, feeder roads, urban roads. The whole country, waki ka akwane yina esyaniya, eh ye, 78,000 kilometers, Ghana akwane yina. Asat January 7, 2017, na akwane ya, eh hu, kota da, kota ayefre no per roads, na eh ye, 23%. 23% out of the total 78,000 kilometers of roads in Ghana. Na, etesen, etesen, ye na akar, 77% you know, na eh ye, eh futu kwane. Either at earth or gravel stage. Ye wa niye fre no, conditioning mix of roads, eh akwane gra ete say, eh ye good, eh ye fair, ena eh ye poor. Asat January 2017, kana akwane ya, ye kambom wa, me si eh ye 78,000 kilometers you know. Na eh mu, eh biya sanro, 39% na eh ye good, 32% na eh ye poor, 29% eh ye poor, 32% eh ye fair. 39% good, 32% fair, 29% poor. Akwane ya, ye de Chair President Ekufwado sa, 2017, eh no no. Ente, say eh was Ashantimane mui, na hunu say, Ashanti, any kumasi, akwane yina asaya. This statistics, namoma enya mohwa, if you say, bayana owoho no, wantinani, angre akwane. And so, obema kuku do for, ah, odie aban papa eh nim, odie akuku draw, odie akuku draw eh bode Ghana roads. So, as I stand here, beti me akachre Ghana vo yana, beti me akachre kumasi for niya Ashanti yana. So, all the 16 regions in the country, all the 260 districts in the country, all the 275 constituencies in the country, road construction is going on everywhere simultaneously. Eh una, etesen Moody, ome yu, Asher, obema sa, that me come home, and that me come to Ashanti. Ashantimane, Ashantimane, ye nim, ofa kumasiya, ye nim, kumasi, ye nim, kumasi papa pa. Ofa Ghana cra, uyii capital, Accra, Kumasi is the second city in Ghana. Ofa ye culture, ofa ye culture, anye tradition dia, Kumasi eh damufoa. Ente, ome yu, President, anyo bebiya akwane, but nenewo, Ashanti, any Kumasi. Se say, minimo eh kase, Kumasi, any Ashanti, akwane eh kosu papa pa. Sami fa Kumasiya. Ye wa, kampene biya, ye fre no contractor, contractor, abain ekwaji, this year, kwa by. 55 million euros, 55 million euros, ye di ni na aba Kumasi, ayeye di ba ya akwane. Contractor, anchor, eh ye, 100, 100 kilometers of Kumasi internal roads, onwa shasiye, onwa shasiye. Ye wa kampene biya, ye fre no grana, grana, for eh ye, 50 kilometers of internal roads, wo Kumasi. Kumasi, ye wa, companies, core constructions, dosho, nomniya diye, on, eh gusu ye, say eh kase. Onwa ye so many kilometers of asphalt overlay. Ente, ente akra na mi bah, mini Vice President, obeka ti so, for 100 kilometers of roads, internal roads, as Anohadro eh beye. Sofoline project, Sofoline project. Sofoline project, eh shasiya wo, President, bufo eh braso, munyani, the interchange. Ah, ye ye ye, any roads wa akwane, eh dikosi eh buakwa. Ye shasiya, companya, ayeye Sofoline project you know, ye fre no, China Joe, ayeye China company, China Joe. Oh ye juma eh ye, almost the interchange, touring President bufo time. And I can stand here and tell you on authority, MPP, if you abam 2008, after 2016, China Joe was not paid, and they abandoned site. Ye ba ye, ye ba ye, ena China Joe eh ba ba, se say, the main interchange you know, is finished. Niya eh haye empa, eh ye, akwane ya, eh fi, Prepa College, eh ko eh buakwa. Ye nim, eh fifra, yankofo eh ti wo ho ba, titu, onwa eh fa kwanuso, ako, eh kromkro Ashanti, prokwa wo ho. Any, ranga hapu, sunyani mamu, ye kase, eh seni, amamwo papenti. President, ente akra, oda 2.2 billion, say, yempa ma contractor, fo yina, and call back. China Joe has been paid a chunk of its indebtedness. Minimo eh kase, and wa muti Kumasi, mibadi huwa dase, China Joe is back. Ah, wangu ye eh juma between Prepa College, eh dikosi eh buakwa. Eh shayeho wa, ye say eh tiya another work sample, amber one. Ye di won, akar, strategic companies who, ah, President, ayeyasisha ye. Ah me, any, miniya finance minister, my colleague finance minister, any Vice President, eh ye, eh juma be. Every month biya, ye tracyka tuha, ye debama all these companies, senya owo site you know, obiya eh fiyo. Me shere Kumasi for bo, me shere Ashantimane bo, me shere Ghana for bo, say eh buakwa. Say, eh, Buakwa, Grandpa College to a Buakwa Road, you know, ah, Akka. Now, yeah, we, the original project of the Sofolai Interchange, the President, before starting, you know. The company is back, China Joe is on site, China Joe is working, and China Joe, eh, facility, beo, until that problem is solved. I am giving you the next five, five to six months, Kumasi for, Boba, Boba, most, eh, Ashanti. Ghana, yeah, Boba, most, eh, I'm, 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 President, eh, people.
Minister, yeah, that's it, um, two questions on local government. Other than the entia Assemblyman, forka, and now, assemblies, niba, yatin, oh, my department, oh, monsanka, eh, yeah, yeah, the day, Deputy Minister.
Your Excellency, the Vice President, Nana Chairman, Ashanti man, I this year. Eh, the kind of Ghana man, Beni, Nana, the Danke Akufwado. Oh, yeah, she, she, eh, Ghana, baby, be a, put to, eh, because so. Now, my aunt, yeah, the Maba, once, eh, yeah, Juma, yeah, eh, the last one. Now, yeah, kebe, mommy, kebe, a member, no, so, no, eh, mu, add those co. Basically, can no, a decent Assembly, common fans, eh, which, yeah, no, so, eh, be a, come here. And not the assemblies. In 2000, last year, Minister for Local Government, the Rural Development, he ona, had ya, Alima, eh, who no say. Said, eh, be a, and put to, eh, because, you need, you know. Any Ghana, you see, Kasem noa, yeah, channel district, district. Mensi, Mensi, the be, oh, oh, no, ha, that coincidences, eh, you know, me, and sa, eh, she. The Kasem no so, so, no, common final, no, yeah, channel coincidences, so, they, oh, me, a channel, Mensi, Mensi, municipal, I know. And it's all here Kumasiya, Ashanti region, yeah, yeah, about 31 districts. In 47, 26, yes, it, she, she, can, based on district, ah. Now, baby, to say, Kemi, you know, back on. Not the, the Honorable Minister for Local Government, Hadiya Alima, eh, yeah, she, she, yeah. Mercy Metro, she, municipalities, Macon, Macon, eh, mu, Aba, Abekan. She, they say, say, common fan, they, eh, cha, instead, say, Kemi, Kuba, Benia, back on, no. Municipals, back on, no, Abeni, you know, so, you know, Braniya, oh, must be, yes, he can, they, he can, and so, Aba, may, no. They found, um, District Directors of Education, now. Brant, yeah, the Maba, eh, eh, be, be, you know, so, I can, yeah, be, ba, I'm, yeah, fa, eh, Juma, for, be, be, nah, Abo, eh, me. And not, eh, eh, she, she, yeah, Aba, the new municipals, add here, eh, here, I'm, a, you know, now, so. Eh, eh, be, be, I'm, bet, now, office space. And not, eh, said, eh, make, say, procurement, eh, we are assemblies, yashia, see, I'm, a contract, yeah, oh, must, see. At, yeah, Akra, Chifoni, all the departments, you know, so, oh, be, to my, tremo, eh, yeah, eh, ma. Eh, we are, eh, be, Boa, I'm, a assembly, sa, sa, be, oh, my, hey, hey, Dan, be, be, you know, no. Oh, mu, come, ah, ha, oh, no, face, yeah, yeah, enough pace, I'm, ah, the Viro's Department, noa. And to me, accommodate, oh, me, you know, eh, to me, Aba. Eh, be, I'm, ah, Quainya, I'm, ah, the Head of Local Government Service, and so, Alpha, Enipa. Backs, yeah, Enipa, about 2700, ah, employee, oh, oh, at the Local Government Service, eh, be, Boa. The Department of Agriculture, and so, what, may, no, you know, so. Aboa, may, I've, Enipa, 2700, that, oh, my, yeah, Juma. The question on number two, many a Assemblyman. Local governance system, you know, yeah, no, Assembly Members, eh, Juma, oh, yeah, no. Eh, who here, Papa, 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 Papa. So, Amra, do for, eh, Juma, no, oh, Bamfasua, eh, ye, chi, don't, pa, Assembly Members, no, the Baboro. Eh, Abua, oh, 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 for you. So, Assembly Members, no, so, be, to my, eh, Juma, so, yeah, oh, we, here, certain logistics. Eh, bit, eh, that, yeah, see, I'm, now, upon, sure, nim, dear, ni, ni, I'm, you know. And not, eh, the Minister of Local Government, Rural Development, last, eh, procure, I'm, Assembly Members, eh, what Ghana, eh, you know, motorbikes. Said, eh, be, eh, be, to me, Aboa. Eh, yeah, so, the Minister of Local Government, eh, yeah, she, she, eh. Assembly Members, Akadia, ne, cause, so, eh, be, Boa, I'm, a, see, car, oh, my, Jj, no, IGF, Internet Generated Funds, you know, and so, Akosu. Now, said, eh, offensive, my, here, eh, can, nothing, you know. Offensive, you know, and no one, yeah, did, no one, agree. And the status quo, eh, now, you know, Assembly Members, yeah, ma, oh, oh, allowances. They, oh, oh, allowances, the, oh, be, to me, oh, oh, can, you know, eh, you know, the port of the IGF. And not the Ministry, so, for, for now, you know, yeah, she, she, eh, yeah, but digitized, all the, oh, properties. And she, she, eh, eh, be, Boa, I'm, a, see, car, Aba Assembly, no, said, eh, be, eh, oh, mu, kitty, no, so, no, eh, be, eh, can see. Now, allowance, I was, yeah, the my Assemblymen, you know, so, and so, at, eh, in the long term, no, so, Minister. Eh, two, ah, no, eh, Jack, in, eh, Akwainya, eh, Befasua, be, to me, eh, tear, Assembly Members. And one of the advocacies of that, and his Excellency, the former President, President, eh, Jokum Kufu. Is of the view, eh, was, yeah, yeah, she, she, eh, they tear, Assembly Members, eh, can. And not, eh, two, ah, no, you, did, eh, say, the future, you know, sans, she, she, you know, eh, be, eh, Juma.
Minister, yeah, that's it, Assembly Members, they say, me, ma, was, oh, to say, she, she, yeah, no, come, oh, oh, na, oh, yeah, yeah, sa. Now, eh, target, now, more, the Bama, oh, say, IGF, no, oh, mu, Pja Mu, no, mu, yeah, now, oh, my, to me, eh, return, eh, be, eh, to you. Yeah, and it's, ah, and so, eh, to me, eh, yeah, 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 that, my, say. But, I'm, a, I'm, pen, in, for, eh, sa, and same, Bem, yeah, and sa, Shama, no. Eh, were questions, niba, oh, oh, ah, me, Babi, yeah, no. Eh, we are, eh, Befah, questions, me, eh, no, eh, was, so, I say. There were questions, me, eh, no, I, that, so, that, and no, Nana, Bant, my, hey, eh, raise, eh, eh. Back, who, eh, sanitation, back, who, eh, security, Kemi, Mayor, who, ah, Mr. O, say, bra. Now, sanitation, I said, no, what, boy, eh, me, eh, yeah, no. Regional Minister, me, I'm, Ofa, Ofa, Mr. O, so, be, ready, now, what, boy, eh, also, on the security question, you know. Eh, question, back, oh, from Maxwell, oh, yes, and Johnny, they about payment modalities. For, one, oh, my, oh, savings and loans companies, any, um, microfinance institutions, you know. Said, oh, my, I'm, penny, eh, be, eh, eh, can, eh, you know. Oh, my, I'm, penny, I'm, a instruction, say, one, oh, you know, I'm, see, car, you know, eh, Bank of Ghana, eh, eh, now, yeah, to, ah, mom. Bank of Ghana, eh, foreign, eh, any Finance Ministry, any receiver, you know. Oh, me, sing, co, yeah, eh, eh, who, eh, yeah, me, we, eh, in, eh, be, ah, oh, my, the, oh, my, oh, timetable, eh, better, out, for payment, you know. But, you, oh, my, I'm, penny, and then, eh, be, eh, eh, so, at, eh, say, I feel, eh, we, say. One, oh, you know, and sa, eh, be, can, oh, must, see, car. Yeah, yeah, name, say, oh, my, the timetable, need details, you know, eh, be, bring. George, eh, beside, question about Ghana First Company. Eh, Ankr, Ankr, eh, you may, be, ah, on eh, and Kofo, eh, sign, contract, so, oh, my, yeah, Juma, man, you know. Now, me, say, and Kofo, eh, contractors, you know, must, see, car, Akem. George, said, yeah, wow, di, can, eh, can, eh, you know, Ghana First Company, eh, eh, private company, eh, yeah, buying, eh, Juma, eh, yeah, buying contracts. Um, but, eh, obi, eh, eh, Quan, eh, him, eh, sa, any contractual dealings, ah. Eh, be, to me, Abua, my, then, yeah, ah, for, oh, Akwainya, oh, Befasua, eh, payment, oh, no, so, eh, sa, eh, can, eh, eh, say, eh, yeah, sorry, eh. Bra, now, local government, in, pen, for, no, so, no, Akwainya, eh, can, eh, oh, oh, no, oh, oh, fair, ma. Akwainya, obi, private company, need, eh, eh, say, eh, eh, yeah, to me, in, trace, eh, say, eh, I, I, say, want, eh, yeah, sorry, I, now, I, Bane, eh, to, eh, oh, um, ah, no, more. And Sana, um, Antonio Figuta, eh, beside, question, see, car, eh, they, Boa, eh, Jedi Four. Now, in, same, Bank of Ghana Monetary Policy Committee, for report, eh, bad, eh, bad, and Sana, last one, eh, eh. Oh, much, eh, say, Bank of Ghana, any banks, you know, and that banks, nisika, eh, Pja, you know. Oh, my, yeah, she, she, yeah, for, be, be, oh, my, friend, SME lending, see, car, eh, they, Boa, eh, Jedi Four, eh, oh, eh, human, in Kumaa. Eh, yeah, she, name, say, one, oh, my, eh, be, we, eh, she, she, yeah, oh, my, yeah, no, now, Quainya, oh, so, Befasua, yeah, eh, say, eh, cabin, you know, oh, so, oh, Saka. Eh, be, oh, Abayan, Kasa, eh, eh, see, car, eh, they, Boa, microbusinesses, eh, friend, oh, Maslo, you know, oh, yeah, I feel, eh, bad, eh, timo, eh. Eh, this, eh, kapu, do, swashim, eh, Jedi Four, eh, be, you know, yeah, to me, eh, from, Boa, oh, oh, ho. May I take two questions from the upper terrace, then we'll add them to the two outstanding questions on security and sanitation. Yes, eh. But, I'm, sure, eh, we are, oh, my, I'm, penny, eh, be, eh, eh, be, eh, name, eh, you know, eh, yako, exhibition, you know, eh, whole round, eh, whole night, some of the photos, need videos, need details, ah. Yeah, you know, eh, you know, districts, you know, any ministries, you know, you know, eh, the, Ababa, Boa, eh, da, eh, oh, open, in, Pachotse, you know, Bobre. While that mic is being fixed, Regional Minister and Mayor, please respond to your questions while we fix that microphone.
All right, thank you very much. That's, eh, Bambo, Seum.
Hello, hello.
No, ah. But, for, but, my, any, eh, can, one, seven, maybe. Now, they make, can, eh, say, eh, oh, the, to, to, if he, be, me, and sa, nine, eh, three, you know. Yeah, Bambo, Seum, you know, eh, con, eh, improvement, Abem. Eh, me, say, eh, Aba Media Cycles, Nansaya, I'm, ah, I'm, for, so, eh, eh. Oh, my, thing, the Pan, so, be, I'm, for, come, oh, oh, eh, who Kumasi. Now, eh, yeah, man, oh, say, who read, eh, ah, one, eh, I'll, be, in, eh, eh, na, no, yeah, eh, eh, see. If you cry, eh, afar, back as, January, February, 2019, eh, no, I'm, a, co, come, bo, eh, eh, see, Nansaya, eh, yeah, eh, yes, in, eh, be, eh. Obi, Akukunu, eh, eh, rehosem, eh, bush, yeah, for, eh, my, money, now, eh, yako. Eh, no, I'm, a, co, fadada, eh, see, eh, no, oh, my, eh, eh, see, Nansaya, eh, who, eh, you, ah, eh, who, oh, some, tree, eh, district, you know. Eh, no, I'm, be, eh, be, can, eh, see, that, now, you, eh, see, that, eh, see, that, eh, see, I'm, a, oh, oh, can. Me, eh, no, eh, eh, yeah, eh, oh, mu, come, oh, oh, eh, wa, pointy, eh, eh, see, who, Abrepo. Eh, no, yeah, you, eh, mo, no, back, oh, eh, eh, who, ne, bush, yeah, for, back, oh, can, you know, yeah, yeah, eh, Jini, eh, who, ne, bush, yeah, for. Eh, name, say, eh, oh, whoa, oh, fi, Ghana, ha. Ne, no, no, investigation, please, for, eh, eh, you know, now, eh, say, eh, be, eh, no, who, be, eh, I, I, eh. Now, eh, Nipah, oh, my, oh, my, oh, di, eh, Gulo, eh, eh, now, eh, yeah, sa, eh. Eh, di, four, nah, can, eh, 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 be, money, oh, my, eh, my, yeah, and, oh, my, eh, eh, because, eh, oh, be. Eh, eh, be, so, eh, 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 nam, four, ah, oh, my, term, eh, be, name, say, eh, eh, see, Kasem, oh, eh, eh, you, eh, eh, you, oh, my, cost, eh, oh, be. Now, oh, my, you know, ah, no, please, eh, for, actually, oh, oh, eh, be, oh, cry, eh, eh, do, oh, my, eh, do, oh, my, tum, eh, eh, be, oh, oh, my, good, so, eh, eh. Now, eh, see, who, eh, you, oh, no, eh, see, who, eh, you, oh, no, eh, but, I'm, sure, yeah, me, ah, don't, eh, process, for, you know, eh, me, eh, be. Eh, who, eh, be, ah, oh, mu, come, oh, Ba, you know, and eh, oh, my, nah, me, ah, no, so, I'm, eh, actually, eh, Nipani, eh. Eh, nah, me, say, please, eh, for, you know, eh, you, eh, mo, no, cause, eh, see, eh, you know, me, eh, say, eh, this, eh, so, you know, eh, be, too, yeah. Now, eh, me, to, my, catch, eh, oh, be, oh, Kumasi, eh, Ashanti, man, eh, you say. Bambo, for, you know, eh, you know, oh, my, nah, so, pa, oh, my, you know, oh, my, nah, so, pa. Now, me, ah, be, eh, eh, fun, too, yeah. Eh, oh, so, me, be, eh, eh, you, eh, me, eh, oh, my, to me, eh, be, eh, more than hundred. Now, be, be, eh, ta, eh, yeah, Ghana, for, oh, my, yeah, Ghana, for, you know, eh, do, oh, mu, come, come. Now, oh, my, eh, Ghana, for, ah, oh, my, eh, for, you know, eh, do, oh, mu, cock, oh. for na, omu di for no, ye du omu kokot, eh ti ayaya ne say, the current regime, you know, Regional Security Council, ye me say, ya simple, you know, say, wo di ni panbe bo ma ne so, omu kofu, me wa, wa mo ah ochwa omu no, eh biya na, wa mu mu be, me nu na my ensa pebi, eh ne ye ni pa moni for, oh, ko huni pa bebe ya pare du omu na, du omu fi say, eh ne me bi kostuwe, eh ti eh juna eh na so, eh no, na nchey, say mo ti eh fi eh, October last year eh ba na, eh biya eh fa police for, niya fa military, niya fa fire service, eh biya migration, omu call radio station, and intense, we chre chiriku di osi ye ye, ye ni si ye ye, ah, eh gusuwa, ye ye, ah, ye chre chra, ma mfo, say ye be ya, bambo se no, omu hu, bibisia, di oso omu ye, and omu hu bibiya, niya, eh oso omu ye, who is su, nonso free nchaya, ye wo joint patrol teams, military and police, ah, omu can operation, calm life for no hun, ah, dem biya, omu ne na, even, this you cry eh ka, even, campus akra, you know, eh wo wa omu befa ha, to ensure say, obi ya be ti niya da, no ada, no epi, akoye dey di ma, be ya sorry, say diya true, ne si di no, na so, obi ya niya regime say, Asantiman temu ha di, asuge wa ha, bambo se no, ama no omes, eh wo slo pa, be damusina, mishla mu ni.
Paging a existing protocol, na, eh ye, eh na na bantma heni, anu ye say, na ne question na, you are F fire, sanitation, eh hu, pasi akak Kumasi metro port and assembly eh, ye how, park esee no eh bi, sanitation and congestion. In 2017, ye say jume di be asee, operation keep the city clean and green, na eh me te say, eh na na bantma heni, eh ne ahemfun bebe, eh ne na na nu ma heman bebe, eh bo yi chi dom, eh wo say jume di eh no, eh hu, ye shasiye no, eh ne eh na na bantma heni, eh fa fa fe mu ma, ah, hoodo mu, eh mu bi suku, eh fi bebe mu, eh ko he, if he ah sebi, eh janai biya kwa inim, na, it will surprise you say, in 2017, eh ninety year no, ne Kumasi, eh ya eh janabiya inimu, eh dosu ye, na, even, within this short period of three years, eh me on our own, ah, na me so boye, ma ye say jume di asee eh ye fair, the minister for sanitation so be twa eh, household toilet, you know, ona, say be, eh ro ro eh omu fiya eh hun, say, oh ni sika, intina oh ni eh janabiya, ye temi di almost 5,000, eh na ye temi ayeh, ah, all the documents are there, obi yo pesu hun, fiya hoodo biya, eh di sa eh janabiya, no mu ma ku ma konu, bebe me abba office, eh be yini ni na so, eh be, atre no, eh nyumani diye, ye omu ra ye di di omu, eh di na say sa mu fe ya, ye 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 program be frena naming and naming, ama hotels do okwa eh close unedown, because eh ku ne eh janabiye bi omu no, eh je fe, eh nyuma ku bi osu swa, eh close unu, eh ko fi say, odidi obetunu eh betun, or how di eh betu bebe, ye tossu me eh nu, eh hun say Kumasi niye how kesi pa eh, let's see, obi ya tu rego bebi oh bibi ya, eh ti eh ba eh na 2017, eh ife eh, aquaine befaswa, eh bebe me, ah, solve sa problem, you know, ye temi fa, non to abain konso, eh border rule, even the first bank eh odika bebuwa eh, eh fidelity, ah, oh be eh 500 dasbin say eh di si groom, Royal Bank, ensu ba bebuwa eh, ama, other corporate bodies, ensu ba bebuwa eh, ni ni na no, say ye beya eh bebuwa, ama ye temi eh di grunumo eh ni. Eh na, na 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 eh ka bakon about, uh, golden toilet pechi ho, eh ye bebiya ya creating as a dumping spot, na, bibi ya ba eh de ne haoba, abobo ya na eh ba eh, eh haobia eh de ba eh ne say, say bin mu ko fiye ko fa eh ura, bebi wo bedu biya, etu me cha eh de to, eh nunti na, sa mu fe ya, December, November, ye chi ni pa be ten, eh du omu kokot, ne binu monti ye say say, addentine ye chi chi omu, eh ne sa omu ko tu re nu go bebiya, eh se se omuto, na diya boye kesi pranese, na na nu anka sa, akoda abakon osu mu no na himfi, onu say wa boye pa ma ye etu me chi bebe, eh di wo bibi ya beko ye stand, bebi ya be hun say, first in the history of Ghana, ye eh eh ye di ka ye color, color suppression, ama abobo ya ningi na no, abobo ya be be fe ru ebiya no, ye ma different color, with different number, say ye beya eh bebe me, attracti omu, eh ti no, eh ye ni pa bi, eh na kotu gu ye, but immediately we clear it, eh ti eh be say say, obi biya ramfano ni mu, na Kumasi no, ye temi fa, eh to ma penfra, go Kumasi was a garden city in West Africa, eh ko form, afraid eh pete eh peja no, but it will require ye ni na eh so, eh damo.
Mayor Edasi, eh chebi omampani abedi eh chre best story, na yako exhibition grounds, posa eh chato me nu, open in.
Um, bato ye freme rekapiya, masen ban say, say ye, eh, police for, MTU for no, isi ha, ravess eh wo kwazu, omu di ayeh eh ye, bebi bebe di be ya, ouvi, eh kay eh ba, MTU for be ye re, dabafue sa, omu di wo musika, omu kuayana eh di ba fra sa ba, eh ti eh common IGP, no one can chi omu mu nyai, na diya police for eh ye no, eh ye.
Pato, me das, omi ya monse manu, his excellency the vice president, too no, he chairman of the police council, eh ti watena supreme, eh chato.
All right, thank you so much, please, my name is Gabriel Attatre.
Pato, ma oniso.
My name is Gabby Attatre, former student leader. I want to ask our noble vice president, you see, it is very evident that he is a man who is top-notch when it comes to economic policy and management, so I want to find out from our able vice president that upon all his qualification and technical know-how, what warranted for the formation of a committee for city depreciation and why his exclusion from the said committee, thank you.
Thank you very much, a background of applause for all the questions that we have received here this afternoon, ye di, ye say misano, ebrenu, abba eh ye, sa eh abri, um, the last question, you know, I'll provide an answer to the last question, and then we will move, uh, to the exhibition grounds and call it a day. The FX Committee of the Ministry of Finance is an internal committee that the ministry set up as part of its own internal engagement in preparing their policy positions before they come to the economic management team and they come to cabinet. It is their own internal working, it is understanding that they have a limited timeframe within which they will contribute to the ministries' thought processes and policy positions, and same will be brought to the EMT and to cabinet. It doesn't derogate from what, uh, the economic management team or what cabinet would decide as the policy direction of this country, and like all ministries do, they are allowed to do their own internal consultations with whoever they desire to consult. His excellency the vice president cannot be called as a member of some ministries' internal consultation committee, as I'm sure you are aware, that would be very improper to do. So, so that you understand the context, that is a context in which the FX Committee of the Ministry of Finance was set up, and when they are done with their work, they will do well to make the details available to us. So, we are getting ready for a closing prayer and the national anthem, after which his excellency the vice president will lead us to the exhibition grounds. Eh be sre mo say, eh komo ayeh di, ye juma eh ye ni na, eh hun for ni, eh wo exhibition grounds ha, say ni oh peni bakuka, and Gafili, Gadochi.